It's six o'clock and time to begin Curville City Council meeting. At this time, Councilmember Brenda Hughes will lead us in prayer and then in our pledge. Let's stand.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings as we gather here this evening. May your hand guide us as we seek to accomplish the meeting goals on tonight's agenda, and ask that our actions tonight reflect what is pleasing to you. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve our community. Let us continue to work through your wisdom and your grace. Give us your joy and the powerful presence of your peace. We pray these things in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens, our public participation continues to be available by calling into the Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox beforehand. All of these instructions are provided online in the agenda. If anyone present wants to speak on our agenda item, by now they would have been required to sign up when they came into the building, except for items 5A, 5B, 6A, and 6B, which require public hearings. When speakers are called, they're to come to the podium in front of the stage and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after the public comments have concluded. Thank you in advance for helping to make this a respectful process. At this time, we come to announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunious?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have three announcements tonight, and the first one involves an upcoming election. We have early voting that begins next Monday, April 19th, runs through Friday of next week, and then Monday and Tuesday, April 26th and 27th of the following week. And then Election Day is scheduled for Saturday, May 1st. The voting hours on those days vary a little bit, so I would encourage everybody to just form more details if you want to visit the Election 2021 page on the city's website, and you can see what it looks like right here. All right, if you have old prescription medications that you want to dispose of, the Curville Police Department will be hosting its annual Operation Got Drugs, and that's going to be Saturday, April 24th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the police office there on Sidney Baker Street. And your citizens are encouraged to bring unused, unwanted, and over-the-counter medications to the police department, and they will make a safe disposal of that. They do that every year. It's a real nice thing for citizens to offer, to get rid of the drugs that they're probably out of date or something. And finally, showing again that we are getting somewhat back to normal, our third annual Guns and Hoses Flag Football Game is back on. It's scheduled for Saturday, May 14th. Last year was the third annual, but it got canceled, so we're still in the third annual. So that's at 6:30 p.m. It's going to be at Amber Stadium. Donations only, but we would like to see a $5 minimum because that money is going to go to families in literacy. All proceeds will benefit that, and that's a lot of fun. Done it two years now, and I think the police department won the first year and the fire department won the second, and maybe vice versa, but I think it's tied up right now, so it'll be a lot of fun. Y'all come out and see it.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any items of community interest?
Me, if I may, please. This Saturday, K-Pub is doing a thank alignment at 11:00 to 1:30, and you can take a ride in the bucket truck, free hot dogs, and pole climbing demos. So it sounds like it would be fun. It's for the whole family. So, and then the other thing I'd like to mention, we have been doing tours at the Doyle Community Center as we are in the process of reconstruction there. And so we will do another tour Friday at 5:00, and then after that, we'll just ask people if they will call the center, talk to Lois, or call me, and we'll set up tours. So we have been doing them every Tuesday and Thursday just automatically, but after this Thursday, we'll ask people to call.
Okay. I would like to have some folks from Shriners University Nursing Program to come join me on the stage. It is good to see you. Good to have you here tonight. In a minute, I'm going to ask you if you'll tell us who you are and what particular part of the nursing program you're involved in. And here is the proclamation. The Shriners University Nursing Program with the April 13, 2021, Curville Kindness Award, Shriners University's four-year Bachelor of Science in Nursing Program, is committed to advancing the nursing profession through the holistic educational preparation of health professionals. The program, forget to take that off. The program consists of two years of prerequisite courses, followed by a second competitive application process, and two years of upper-level nursing courses and hands-on clinical training. The program is approved by the Texas Board of Nursing and accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. Since starting the BSN program in 2011 and an online R and BSN program in 2014, Shriners has graduated 454 students. Would you tell us who you are and a brief comment if you have?
Hello, I'm Clay Stewart. I'm a junior nursing student at Shriners University in the BSN program, so second semester. Got two more to go. It's a great program. I haven't quite narrowed down what area of nursing I'm going to be in. I'm still kind of keeping that open, but it's a wonderful program. I've learned a lot, and I look forward to learning more. Thanks for having us here.
My name is Julie Huffman, and I'm a senior in the nursing program. I live here in Curville, and when I graduate in just a few weeks, I'll be working at Peterson Hospital on the med search floor. But I would highly recommend Shriners Nursing Program. It has been phenomenal.
Hi, I'm Lisa McDonald. I'm one of the faculty members, new to Shriners and new to Curville, but very excited to be a part of the program and really raising the bar for all of the nurses here in our community and hopefully to continue to provide excellent care to the citizens of the whole country. So thank you for having us.
Great, great. Having worked at the hospital this last year, I've seen such evidence of the Shriners program and what a difference it's making locally. And in the vaccinations, they've been happening. Oh, boy. That's, that's been good. All right, let's see. Let's get a picture. Unless this looks funny. Now, some folks from our senior citizens committee, and I'd like for you to come up here. Hey. Hey. Yeah. All right. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Curville is dedicated to promoting and sustaining a community that actively assesses and serves the needs of all ages, including our large senior community. And whereas Curville residents ages 55 and over account for 34.4% of the total population. In 2018, Curville adopted a Curville 2050 Conference of Plan that designated eight key priority areas to guide city growth and objectives over the next 30 years. Six of those key priority areas relate directly to addressing the needs of Curville's 55 and over population. And whereas the city of Curville sees tremendous value in becoming an ARP age-friendly community and enthusiastically supports our Senior Services Advisory Committee with their plans to enhance the quality of life for Curville residents, plans that ensure our aging community needs are at the front of future planning. Now therefore, I Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the city of Curville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Curville as a city committed to promoting, creating, and sustaining communities for all ages in support of the Senior Services Advisory Committee and ARP's designation as an age-friendly community. Now, if you would give us your name and tell your particular role in this.
Hi, I'm Waverly Jones, and I'm the Operations Director at the Deeter Center and currently Chair of the Committee.
I'm Christine Klema, and I'm on the Committee and have been very involved off and on for at least two years, working up to this night. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janice Anderson. Came to Curville in 2003 to work for a hospice, and then I've also worked for the Deeter Center, now retired. And since I'm going to be 75 in a few months, I feel like qualified for this place on the board. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Karen Maddox. I am a native Curvillite, and I worked at the Doyle Center, have worked there for a year, and I am a brand-new member of this Committee.
Hi, thank you. But yeah, wait there just a minute for a picture. I will say that Karen Maddox was involved in getting Habitat Humanities started here. So she has a long history of making a difference in the community. Okay. Here go Peter, Bonnie, and the others.
Thank you, ladies.
I'm going to remind her to take this mask off now, but I'm keeping it on for this reason. It's a Baylor mask, and it gives me power. Chief, could you come up?
All right, this time I'd like to bring Brian Mickel, our EMS Person of the Year. I am proud to recognize Brian Mickel as EMS Person of the Year. Ryan was hired as a firefighter in March 2012 and recently assigned as A Shift's Lead Paramedic. Ryan is credentialed as a paramedic, structural firefighter, Fire Instructor 1, and Driver Pumper Operator. Ryan is always researching new and innovative opportunities to improve patient care and station life for his fellow employees. He's an integral part of training of recruits on EMS documentation, fire report writing, and customer service. He recently created a documentation guide to assist new and veteran paramedics to improve efficiency and accuracy for our electronic patient care reports. He has assisted with EMS billing over the years when we were short-staffed and instrumental in applying that knowledge to the crews. Brian is a team player and strives to keep people around him positive no matter the situation. Brian is a dedicated paramedic that takes pride in improving patient care for his crew and ensuring Curville Fire Department's mission of exceptional team, efficient methods, and excellent service. As officers noted, Ryan is a pleasure to work with, a valuable member of the team, outgoing and friendly with citizens. It is a rare occasion that when given a task, Ryan would not complete the assignment. He has a team mindset when getting things done, even if it's not reciprocated by his coworkers. When I asked him what his number-one value is for the Curville Fire Department, he responded teamwork. These are just a few of Ryan Mickel's outstanding performance and merits that earned him the 2021 EMS Person of the Year.
And Ryan declines to say anything, but hey, we honor you, and we're proud of you. And I hope you know, and I think you do, I know the chief does, this council really appreciates the fire department and all the personnel involved. All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we come to the COVID-19 report, and I'm going to ask the city manager to make some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to start off by reiterating that I think shared with all of you, and I think the newspaper caught it up, caught onto it as well, that beginning May 1, because of the low number of COVID cases and because of the number of people that have been vaccinated, that we're going to no longer require masking in City Hall and in other city buildings, as well as in council meetings. And as I said earlier, we'll just kind of take it week by week, but it looks like it's about time. We've got one more meeting this month, that will be, or two more, a workshop and a council meeting. Both of those will be back at the council chambers because this facility will be used for different purposes on your second meeting. And then, beginning in May, we'll be back here for the first meeting in May at least. We're anticipating larger crowds because that'll be post-election, and supporters want to come. And so that would not be a masked event. And then we'll move over to City Hall permanently, I hope, for sure by June. So that's the plan going forward. With that, Chief, you want to comment on the status of the virus?
Give you all a brief update, Council, Mayor. Good news report can continue to report that the case count where we're currently at is 21 active. There are 86 deaths, 4,200 are recovered. And hospitalization, we saw an increase in that over the weekend, so we're at seven hospitalized. Another interesting piece to the data we see is that there are over 24,000 COVID tests have been performed. Over 21,000 of those were performed by Peterson Health. Changed up a little bit because thankfully, since about mid-March, the numbers have been pretty flat regards to under 30 active cases. But I thought it was kind of interesting to look back a little bit about where we've been and where we're going to kind of couple with the changes we're doing come May 1st. And you can really see in the blue shows those active numbers. This is an average active for each month, and you can see the steady increase from November to December and January. And slowly, the deceleration phase in February through March, and now April is averaging 25. The high is in the orange, and you can see the highest, the biggest concern we have. You can see through December, especially January, we were at 498. Those are positive tests that have come back on the active cases, knowing that the number may have been higher. And you can see how those numbers come down. And then the hospitalizations. The hospitalizations, although the average, we were at high at one point of 36, and now through March was two and a half, and through April has been five. So really pleased with where we are in regards to our response, our community's response, and what we've asked them to do throughout this pandemic. Local update, so we had the free public testing at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. That was the week of March 22nd. This is a full-week-long testing. There was only 151 people that went out there to be tested. You remember earlier in that, some of those one-day ones, we were up to 600 people being tested in one day. So the numbers came down pretty significantly, those that were looking to get tested. We're going to have another test date for the free one and to be determined probably in April, early May. That'll be a one-day testing now, just due to the numbers being a lot lower. Meetings in collaboration, so we're working on a vaccine planning group meeting this week or early next week with Peterson Regional to kind of discuss some of the goals that we need to set for the mass vaccination clinics. And then we have a community leadership meeting next Thursday, April 22nd, tentatively set. Community vaccine update, once again, trying to see where we've been and where we're going. The rollout timeline, this comes from the Department of State Health Services, is that back in December 14th is when they opened up the vaccine and started vaccinating that Phase 1A, those frontline healthcare workers and that long-term care facilities. Those were something they were focusing on. December 29th, the state opened it up, Phase 1B, and that really was one of the big focuses we had here in Kirk County regarding, that was the 65-plus or 16-plus with those underlying medical conditions, those comorbidities in regards to if you were contracted COVID. March 3rd, the state opened up the schools and the licensed childcare personnel. Peterson Regional was able to meet that need and one of the mass vaccine clinics. In fact, last Saturday, they all received their second dose of those that wished to receive that. On March 13th, Phase 1C opened up. That was the 50 to 64 age. And then real quickly after that, two weeks after that, the state opened up on March 29th. Everyone was eligible 16 and older based on which vaccine you wanted to receive. So very interesting timeline. The DSHS website, collecting data on there. They have some good data in regards to the vaccine doses administered, kind of where you are for every county, all the 254 counties. So in Kirk County, there are over 23,000 vaccine doses are administered. And I thought it was interesting, this number's a little higher. They didn't have complete data today when I pulled it, but 37% of 65-plus residents are fully vaccinated. The data they had on there was 65 to 79, so they're still missing the 80-plus. I don't know why it wasn't on there today, so I apologize for not having that. But 22% of eligible residents are fully vaccinated in Kirk County. So we still have a lot out there with the first doses, so we're still expecting that number to continue to climb. And remember, that's just not people that were vaccinated at our mass vaccine clinics, but these are ones that could have been vaccinated anywhere in the region. So the community registration process, we had the pre-registration waiting list. We opened that on February 11th, and that was closed on March 29th after some of the mass vaccine clinics we weren't getting, they weren't full. We were to continue trying to monitor that list. So everyone on the list has been contacted. They have registered via either online or the city's call center. And so we contacted everyone. There were 1,800 that were remaining on the list as of last week. Peterson worked through that list, and there was only about 250 people off that list that still needed the vaccine or unable to obtain that in another county or locally. So the new COVID-19 vaccine self-s scheduler kind of came out of that waiting list where we had it. And so that was one of the meetings we had with Peterson. And it's an online, it's a self-registration process that they currently use for Peterson Urgent Care, and we're able to use it for the vaccine clinics. So it's web-based. It is preferred. If anyone has an email, and you can find it at PetersonHealth.com under the COVID-19 Vaccine Self-Schedular. Or the city's call center is available at 800-208-3611 if nobody had internet or email. And basically, it opens up the calendar for a specific vaccine clinic date. So you can go on there as a citizen, and I can choose the time that is currently available. So that works very well. It's going to be a proven system moving forward for our clinics, determining how many we have. Currently, it is closed, so that got closed today in light of the Johnson &amp; Johnson so regards to the FDA notification on that. So it is closed. We're waiting for more information to come from the FDA and the CDC after a meeting on Wednesday, and then we'll be opening up the self-schedular again for that, but it did work very well. The community vaccine clinics, so we had our Save Our Seniors Initiative. This was provided by the Texas Military Department, the county, and Deeter Center. So there are 143 residents that are now fully vaccinated in that program. So they got their second dose on Monday, on April 12th. And we have another clinic scheduled on April 27th. So we identified other homebound individuals that need the vaccine through hospice and through home health. And so this will also be coordinated through the Deeter Center. So the county has helped doing this coordination, and Texas Military Department is going to partner with some of their volunteers, get a few rounds, and they'll be able to get the vaccine, not just for those that are homebound, but anyone that caretaker in the home also is eligible for that. So it's a very small number, but that will finish up the homebound program. Peterson Regional Medical Center, so their next clinic currently is Thursday, April 22nd. That's going to be a thousand-dose clinic that is going to be set up. They currently did have the self-schedular open, and we're working through that. It is closed until we get more information. We'll reopen again. And so you'll see that date available on the 22nd, and then we'll definitely have another date after that also.
The 22nd is not the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine?
That will, that is currently the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So there was one scheduled for April 16th, this Friday. That one got canceled completely, and so currently keeping that one available for the Johnson &amp; Johnson pending the decision from the CDC regarding the safety.
So is it open right now, or?
It is not, so we closed that this morning. We closed the self-scedular this morning, and the call center got closed this morning.
And then what's the plan for the 16th? I know someone on the 16th that got canceled. I'm just curious what the plan is for that. Will they be looped into the next round after?
Correct. So we had 800 people that were available for the 16th that used the self-scedular or the call center, and so they will get on the next one that is available, and they'll get first opportunity for that. So we can get them on there, or we'll make them available for the 22nd. So we're working through that. That's our vaccine planning group coming up, so hopefully work through some of those. So hopefully work through some of those, and so we'll make sure that they get taken care of. Other local sites available, HEB stores are receiving from the federal allocation, Walgreens and Walmart. Family Practice has received some of those and the Medical Arts Pharmacy on Wesley Drive. So they're also receiving some of the vaccine doses. I'm not 100% whether it was the Johnson &amp; Johnson or the Moderna that they currently have. I know as of last week, Walgreens had the Moderna, as with HEB, but it would become more popular with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. And then the Kerrville VA is always available for those veterans with eligible benefits. COVID-19 still remains a public health threat, so we are in great position. I think the best practices we have done as a community and we have remained vigilant and we have done, we have got us on the right track in a position where we wanted to be. So this is a very different conversation we're having now than we definitely did back in January for that. So very pleased with where we're at. We'll continue to work on that, we'll continue to make the vaccines available for those who continue to want that. And so continue to ask everyone to continue to follow the guidelines. Department of State Health Service has great information. If people like more information on the Johnson &amp; Johnson, it will be available on the Department of State Health Service's website or any of the other vaccines out there. With that, I will take any questions.
Counsel, any questions under Chief? Now, as always, you do a good job in presenting this info. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any speakers lined up, Ms. McCallahan?
No, sir, no citizens or visitors have signed up to speak.
Then we move ahead to the consent agenda. And I want to ask the council if you desire to pull anything.
Mayor, I'd like to pull, and I totally agree with it, it has nothing to do with that, but maybe a little more information on the Olympic Pool emergencies, so 4B.
Okay. All right, we'll pull 4B. We can move on and vote on the rest, all except 4B. Do you have a motion in regard?
I'll make a motion, we approve items 4A, 4C, and 4D.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Ms. Boyle, would you give us some info in regard to the pool?
Sure, do you have any specific questions that I can address?
Actually, my first question was, where will the money come from? Because if this is an emergency thing.
I'll defer to Mr. Hoppe.
Yeah, so we've got partially into contingency and we may also transfer some capital funds given the nature of this. There actually, this piece, as you may recall from several weeks ago, we had two different elements. One was a pool leak, and this was an equipment failure that we had within the filtration system, which was a larger, more sizable element. And so we did have to pull some capital funds over to cover this.
You'll see it in May as part of a budget amendment.
And actually, with what they're going to be doing, no matter what we might do with the pool in another couple of years, this will all be part of it, could be part of it. It's nothing above and beyond what would be usable.
Correct, the fix now will be getting us operational to where we can open the pool this summer. If we were not to be able to do these repairs, we would not be able to open the pool because we would be out of code, out of compliance with state code. So like I said, it's just going to be getting us operational and up to code.
And was any of this due to the freeze?
Unfortunately, not.
Just all above and age, old?
Yes, due to the old infrastructure, you're correct.
Thank you, and Councilman Wagner, I'm glad you just pulled it because I have a level of concern just in reading the item that if we don't, we're going to be behind, just like everything else. If we don't look at it, it's aging infrastructure. And just, I'm putting it out there that I think it's something that we need to look at proactively instead of reactively going forward, so we don't get behind playing catch-up and spending money that we could have saved had we been ahead of the game instead of behind it. Okay, that's all.
We have a motion on this item.
I'll move that we accept 4B as presented under the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
A second, motion second. Okay, all in favor, if you'll let me know with the raised hand and unanimously. There we go, public hearings. Ms. McCallahan, will you read in 5A?
Resolution number 19-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a dwelling, single-family detached with accessory dwelling unit on the property consisting of parts of lots 2 and 3, JA Tybee Addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Texas known as 1517 East Main Street. Said property is located within an R1 zoning district and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein.
Okay, Mr. Paxton, tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. This is a request for a conditional use permit for the accessory dwelling unit. The homeowners are looking to remodel the existing home to create a separate, smaller apartment out of part of the previously converted garage. Here's a site plan showing the parking, so these all are code-compliant parking spaces. They'll be adding two parking spaces to comply with the parking of two spaces per unit. And here's the recommended conditions that go along with the resolution. They would be tied to the site plan, maximum building height of 35 feet, which is our standard code. Maximum area of the accessory dwelling unit is 50% of the primary home, which the plans that they proposed do meet that. There are required two parking spaces per dwelling, so a total of those four parking spaces.
Drew, when you have an accessory unit, is that eligible for short-term rental?
That would be a separate conditional use permit.
So they're not applying for short-term? They would have to do that as a separate piece?
That is correct.
And Drew, it's really tight when it comes to parking there with the cement wall next to it. But there's actually, there's enough room there to do that?
Yes, there is. There's two existing spaces in that driveway. And then you can see in the site plan, they're proposing two more to the side. It would take up a portion of the front yard.
Okay, okay.
As I understand it, none of the neighbors objected?
No, we did not get any opposition at Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, all right. Okay, anyone want to speak to this? Then I will open the, open session at 6:37. Okay, if not, close at 6:37. Okay.
I don't know if any of the citizens or visitors would like to speak?
Okay. When I opened it, I thought they would. But if we have citizens here to speak to this, then I invite you to. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion on 5A?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 19-2021 as presented.
Second.
Got a second? Okay, we got a second? All in favor of this, if you'll raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously. Let's go to 5B, Ms. McCallahan, if you'll read that in.
Resolution number 20-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of approximately 0.187 acres, comprising Lot 8, Block 1, Schreiner High School Addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville and more commonly known as 821 Robinson Avenue. Said property is located within an R1A single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein.
Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental unit at 821 Robinson Avenue. Here's a site plan showing the existing house. The driveway does run from the front of the property all the way back to that accessory building. So there's more than enough room for the three parking spaces as required. The conditions in the resolution include a guest notification. So that's a notification that the operator will present to the applicants or to the customers, just notifying they are in a residential area, what to do with their trash, parking, and so on. They are required to comply with the occupancy tax, the city's code ordinances. If they choose to have a sign, the signage would be consistent with any home occupation signage that would be allowed in R1A. Minimum lot-street parking, again, is one space per bedroom plus an additional space for an off-site manager. There are a maximum occupancy of 10 guests. And any other, of course, zoning conditions would be required, so. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this for approval.
I'm going to ask you to explain some terms, zoning terms through this. But one is, single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district. So.
Yes, the R1A district, the title of that district is single-family dwelling and allows the accessory dwelling unit as a permitted use by right. This property does not have a secondary dwelling unit. It is just the main house. There's an accessory building in the back, but it is not a dwelling unit.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. At 6:41, we opened the public hearing. Anyone to speak to this? Okay, public hearing is closed at 8:42, 6:42. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that approve Resolution number 20-2021, item 5B as presented.
Okay, Ms. Hughes?
I'll second.
Your second, okay, all right. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise the right hand. And it passes unanimously. Okay, 6A, Ms. McCallahan?
Ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, which adopted zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Such chapter more commonly known as the city zoning code. By changing the zoning and classification of a property located at 327 Peterson Farm Road, comprising approximately 3.12 acres from a single-family residential zoning district, R1, to a residential mixed zoning district, RM, providing an cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right, Mr. Paxton?
This is an ordinance to change the zoning from R1 to RM. And the applicant is looking to subdivide the property into two lots, and the new lot will have a manufactured home on it, which is allowed in the RM district. Current zoning is R1, across the street is PD, and then to the south is the airport district. Part of the strategic catalyst area 11, which surrounds the airport. Here's a view of the utilities. This property is served by city water, it is not served by city sewer. So they have a current septic system, and they'll be working with the county environmental health department on an additional septic system for the new home. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Counsel? Okay. And it's 6:44, we open the public hearing? Still at 6:44, we close the public hearing. All right, do we have a motion on 6A?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2021-11 on first reading.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay. Do I hear a motion? You got a motion, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. 6B?
Ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the city zoning code. By changing the zoning of a property known as 716 Barnett Street, consisting of parts of lots 5, 6, and 7, Block F, Cage Addition, within the city of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, from a residential transition zoning district, RT, to a neighborhood commercial zoning district, C1, providing an cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right, okay. Mr. Paxton again?
This property is currently zoned RT, they are requesting a zone change to C1. It is part of the strategic catalyst area number one, which encompasses downtown. And C1 zoning district is compatible with that catalyst area and supports the downtown revitalization. Their applicant is looking to, within the footprint of the building, convert the, I guess really a break room into a commercial kitchen to house a catering business, is the intent, so that they would, the catering business would not be allowed in RT as a restaurant. But they are looking to add that use to the building. Planning and zoning, again, recommended with unanimous vote. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Here's another definition, a neighborhood commercial zoning district, meaning?
The C1 or the neighborhood commercial district is a very small-scale commercial zoning district that is intended to serve the area around it. So this property being kind of on the fringe of downtown RT district and the neighborhood behind that would serve that area. And then, of course, it, since it is catering, it may be serving beyond that area, but providing for that neighborhood use on the edge of the neighborhood, but starting to get into the commercial that you see on Cindy Baker.
Look at the property, it's almost surrounded by commercial.
That's correct. To the northwest, you have O'Reilly's Auto Parts fronting on Cindy Baker. To the southeast, you have the dental office fronting Earl Carrier. Offices on both sides of Barnett Street.
All right, okay.
Was there any objections?
No, there were no objections.
Any other questions, counsel?
Drew, is there, if they had a couple of trucks, vans, that they would be, excuse me, to move food, is there enough room to park those off-street in the back?
They do have a parking lot behind the structure, behind the office building.
All right, if there are no other questions from counsel? 6:48, public hearing is open.
Good evening, my name is John Hewitt, I'm the owner of the property. And I requested the zoning change because my, I need to convert my kitchen, which consists of a refrigerator and a sink, to a commercial kitchen, which needs to be a three-compartment sink and a bigger refrigerator and a mop closet. My daughter has started a catering business where she provides charcuterie boxes to wineries and other businesses. And so what she wants to do is come in after hours, put together the charcuterie boxes, which is meats and cheeses and fruits. No cooking, no, there will be no oven, no stove, no deliveries, no pickups. She's just going to come in after hours and put these things together in my kitchen. So that's the extent of the request. So it'll have no impact on the neighbors or there'll be no truck deliveries or anything like that.
What's the name of the business?
Hill Country Cravings.
I can highly recommend it, by the way.
Good, good. Is she going to push you out?
Well, I hope not, I hope not.
All right, okay. Okay, counsel? Questions? Okay, thank you very much. If there are no other speakers? If there are no other speakers? Closed, public hearing is six fifty. Okay, do we have an item or a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash twelve.
Alright.
I'll second.
Second, motion second? Okay, all in favor, let me know by the raised hand? Okay, thank you. Uh, now we go to seven A, Ms. McLeinen?
Construction agreement with Alamo City Constructors, Inc., for the twenty-twenty-one street reconstruction project in an amount of four million, one ninety-six thousand and twenty-nine dollars. There's no speaker signed up.
I'm sorry?
There are no speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Uh, we'll see if we can get the presentation up here. Basically, just a quick recap, this is the second group of streets that we took out of, of the bond reconstruction streets. The first group we brought to you, just completed this past fall. Some of the bigger streets that didn't have utility conflicts and whatnot. Francisco, Lemos, Waterloopy, Newton, Plaza, Stephanie, and Water Street from Lemos to Five Points. Hopefully, everyone has seen that impact on, on the community and the great reception we've received from that. You know, if you recall, we had a pretty extensive list with these. And a lot of these resided in the Doyle area. And we also had utility conflicts. So we, we elected to, to get the first phase out. Let's go ahead and get something going. And then we delayed for avenues and city utility relocations. And this is, is that, that delay. Barnett, Cottage, Hillside, McFarland, Newton, Remshaw, Stephanie, and Wallace.
Why, why is Stephanie on there twice?
That's a good question. I was probably just, uh...
I think Stephanie's already been done.
Yes, Stephanie has been done.
Okay.
It is not on there.
Couldn't we replace it with circle?
Yes, so...
So we're not doing anything else on Stephanie?
So here, no, no, we're, we're done with Stephanie at this point. Here's just kind of a diagram, so you can see both of the, you have package one, package A, package B. As you can see, it's really centered around that Doyle area. From the comp plan, we had the high priority streets, but also the Doyle plan. There was the, the street maintenance that really, you know, the constituents that lived there really wanted us to focus on that. In addition to that, and actually, here's a little bit zoomed-in version. It's black and white, so I don't know how well you can see that. But again, this is what we're doing right now, all, all in that Doyle area, except you can see the outliers, Hillside. Just a lot of delayed maintenance in this area. We want to get these folks some better streets. After the comp plan, we did the Doyle community plan. We brought this to them, brought in the PCI scores, where their streets fell. We kind of reiterated, reiterated to them what the street plan was. And the focus of, of, you know, bond dollars was the reconstruction and outlined that. In addition to that, we also did the connectivity. And this was an opportune time, we've got a contractor mobilized, they're gonna be having to do curb work, let's look at providing some shared use paths and whatnot. So West Barnett and McFarland will have an eight-foot shared use path to provide that connectivity to eventually Clay Street in, in the downtown area.
Is that what you're talking about? Shared use paths?
Yes, it's, it's a basically a bigger sidewalk. Shared use being bike and pedestrian.
So like a five-foot?
So yeah, think about, you know, basically eight-foot river trail.
Eight foot?
Just along, along the street. We want to get the, a lot of the parking right now is in the street because there's not really a defined street. So we're, we're bringing curbs in, we're bringing sidewalk, get the kids...
That picture at the top right there, is that a bike lane that's in there, or something?
Uh, that is, yes, I don't know if you recall from the, uh, the Doyle plan, I can't zoom in for you. But yes, that, that was one of the concepts we were looking at, was how we connect. And so the bike lane that we're looking at is more along Paschal, uh, concept. What we're presenting on West Barnett and McFarland is not, it's to get them off the street.
Yeah.
And so that's, we're already doing concrete work, let's go ahead and see what bids, we have come in. We, we had excellent bids come in with that, all with them budget. And so here, like I said, it's a little bit hard to see. This is, uh, West Barnett. And so what you'll see, the, the yellow is going in, and if, if they have driveways, we're basically gonna have to tear them out. But we're gonna, we're gonna give the, the folks some good concrete driveways. We're gonna narrow the, the street a little bit so that they can have that shared use path. The red is the eight-foot sidewalk, your shared use path. And so it's gonna define the street with the curb and gutter. But we're also gonna give the pedestrians room to walk, you know, so they're not walking in the street between, you know, between vehicles and, and doing so, we're gonna repair their driveways. So like I said, that, that's gonna start, the far left of that is the creek, that's Town Creek. We do end this at Webster, we don't go all the way to Paschal, because that, that section of street was already done, I think about four years ago by the Streets Department. So this was that, the next development of that was, West Barnett was so poorly scored that it still scored so high, even, or high on the reconstruction side, even with that being done right in front of the Doyle Center. So that will continue down Paschal and then connect into the, the new eight-foot path on McFarland. So this is McFarland, the top, top left is Paschal, the bottom right is Clay Street. This will connect Court, Shriner, or Salvation Army, connect everything in there to this eight-foot path that will eventually connect to Cuts. Heavy folks on that, very, very positive community feedback. Additionally, as part of the, the annual budget, you have given us a sidewalk budget. We have already received a contract from McFree, and that construction that you're seeing there is a five-foot sidewalk to connect basically the Doyle Center up to Carver Park.
So this is part of our sidewalk budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am. The, the annual budget, that, so this is separate from the reconstruction? Yes, ma'am. And this will start on the twenty-second. The inspectors went out today and notified the, the people, I think all but two answered the door, or maybe it was only two that answered the door. Very, again, very well received, in last week's little community meeting, to connect to the sidewalk up at Carver Park.
Yeah.
So with that, before I get to questions on, on that, we, we did receive bids. We had very, very good turnout on bids, very competitive. That takes all, all the streets that you saw in that, that package B and puts sidewalks, curbs where they're appropriated, and gets us more bond dollars used. So we, once we get this awarded, we will look at about two, three week timeline, timeline of getting contracts, bonds, insurance, and hopefully, first part of May, start turning, you know, some of those pavements and, and...
Which should start, you said May?
May is what? I'll say, I'll just say May, not knowing the beginning or end, but our intent is to start the first street, first part of May.
And how long would you anticipate? Three, four months?
That's the million-dollar question. With, with the construction of the sidewalks, it's gonna take a little bit of coordination. Basically, we're anticipating June to September, October timeframe. You know, we want them done this paving season. Paving season does go through the fiscal year, ending into October. But before the weather starts turning, turning cold, we want it to be done, you know, that October time, timeframe at the end.
I realize, I realize there are a lot of efficiencies to, to the work being done in one area. Come back and say, at some point, I hope Westminster Street gets done over behind Shriner. As soon as I became mayor in twenty-eighteen, I started hearing about that street. And, so anyway, just file it away.
So we, we have heard a lot of those complaints as well. And the reason that that did not make the recon list is a lot of utility work that has to be done with that. There's a lot of sewer and, and water infrastructure that has to be upgraded first. So that, that's not on, on this list, because we, we do have these others that we can get to quicker.
So Carl, what, once we roll this out, then we have a package C?
So what we'll do, we've, we've got a pretty good estimate of what we're looking at, Westminster being one of them. I, I think we're estimated to be about one-point-two, leave a little contingency, you know, one-point-two million remaining on those bond dollars. We also have the, the drainage improvements, we're hoping to get approval from, from Tech Stop to move forward with the, the Take It Easy drainage. That was part of that. And so coupled with, with the street recon, you know, for A and B, we're gonna look at what, what the next allocation would be, you know?
So we do have dollars for, for a third grouping possibly, or yes, or...
We're gonna have to look and see how, it may just be one street, but yes. Our intent is to spend everything that, that you've provided to us on, on reconstruction.
Do something with it. And I wanna, I just wanna comment how excited I am about the sidewalks being done in combination with the streets being repaired. It's like the perfect thing to do, the perfect time, the fitting with the twenty-fifty. In fact, um, at the code review committee, we were talking about the subdivision code, it was brought up that when we require individuals who are developing to put in sidewalks, it makes sense that we look at the city doing that same kind of work when, when we're reconstructing the streets. So I'm real pleased with that.
Yeah, and if you, if you go down Pascal, and there's a school bus, and there's children getting off that bus, and they don't have sidewalks, and there's all those cars that are parked along the road, it really is, is an accident waiting to happen. I'm really glad to see some sidewalks put in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, again, when we started all this process, that was, we had so many people asking us to do something about streets. And I take a lot of pride in our staff that we've been able to pull this together and move forward with it and make great strides. So I kudo to you guys.
Thank you, we couldn't, couldn't do it without your backing at some point. We appreciate everything that counsel and labor do, and I'm excited about it.
This is good stuff. Thank you.
Ms. McLeinen, any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Do we have a motion and a second on this item?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract with Alamo City Incorporated for streets and, for streets.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, let me know by the raised hands? Okay. Both, we're citizens here and watching on TV. I want you to understand that we don't, you know, approve that kind of money lightly. But when you look at what needs to happen in the way of streets, safety, and sidewalks, we need to do it, so. Okay, do you, counsel, do you have any items for future agendas?
Mr. Mayor, I do. It brought to my attention, there's, there's a code issue, particularly with the PNI, Public and Institutional Designation, that there's some restrictions that they are facing regarding storage units. And I've been asked to bring that up before counsel, a future agenda, and I, I don't know if city manager wants to respond to that, but I think it's something that we need to take a look at.
Yes, sir, we actually have a, kind of a slate of possible zoning changes coming to you all, first P and Z, and then counsel, this summer. We, we, you know, we started out, after y'all passed the new zoning code about, well, a few months later, we'd said six months because of COVID, it was delayed. But we still want to bring back at least once annually, perhaps more often, zoning code changes that are appropriate. And so we already have a list of a few, and we could add that to the list to go through as a possible amendment.
Timeframe estimate?
This summer.
So if I have something to, um, like I've had, if I've had a citizen speak to me about something, for example, I have a citizen talk to me about what can I do with this use I want to, you know, um, in an R-T. And it, to me personally, seemed like it would be a compatible use with an R-T district, but if not allowable based on how our zoning was set up? I would, what would I do to have that looked at as part of this review process?
Just let me know, and I'll make sure that Drew gets it and adds it to his list.
Alright.
And that, that of course goes for everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. I'm going to make a motion. If you're in the executive session under sections five-five-one dot oh-seven-one and five-five-one dot oh-seven-two and five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven of the Texas Government Code. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we go into executive session on, do I need to repeat the numbers?
I don't, I don't think so.
That's good.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to go into executive session? All in favor, raise the right hand? Alright. And as those of you know, come to these council meetings, we will go into executive session, deal with some, uh, some items we need to deal with there. And, and by the way, sometimes I hear them say, well, what happens to those? Well, then, most of the time, they come back to counsel to be approved, and so... But anyway, we will go into executive session and be back in a little while. I just, I want to announce to the hundreds of people who are still here that we have nothing to report out of the executive session. We're adjourned.